This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
I've got a call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for January 7th at 6:01. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. First time.
Careful the port. I have to sit there?
No, no, I'll just be checking the port. I'm an accident.
You can if you want to. Okay, very good. So, good evening, everybody. Happy New Year.
Good new year.
Hope everyone had a somewhat quiet and joyful New Year. I think we'll start off with some citizen speak. And Tammy, I think you're here in person for a change. Wow, it's been a while.
All right.
Is the light on? Okay. Yep.
Yes. Tammy Walunas, College Highway 298. Happy New Year. First item that I would like to address is as Southampton Historical Society, I want to let our residents know that our board is going to be very, try to be more active with the actual 250th events. So therefore, we probably are not going to be having the other historical events that we would normally be having at the House. If people want to get into the House, by all means, contact the curator or myself. We, the Historical Society, is still going to sponsor, celebrate Southampton on August 16th. We are looking at just a one-day event right now. But please let us know if you have any questions or concerns regarding the Historical Society. So that wasn't too bad. My second question is, at the last meeting, it was brought up about involving a more detailed ad hoc committee to doing fiber within the town. As a citizen, for over 30-something years now, I have a concern with that when we have places around us that already provide it. Yes, it may be slow at times. What are you uploading? There is a opportunity for this town to bring in sewer. There's a wonderful sewer study report out on the town's website. It's a 75-page document. Most of it is stuff in the back. But it has really valuable information to this town's maps. And again, as a resident, I think our water would be a priority over having fiber. We have no idea what people are dumping into the ground this way here. If we can get a lot of the businesses onto the sewer, that's going to help them, but it's also going to bring in more revenue for our town. With the sewer coming through, there's an option, a possibility of infrastructure growth or economic growth. The town owns that land on College Highway now, and there's four commercial lots. We get sewer in, that means we could get restaurants in there. That would give us revenue for not only the land, but their building, their food. And it will make this a very desirable town, even more desirable than what it is already. I don't know exactly who, I assumed all of the Select Board was, is in on, on this study?
We know it. We may not necessarily all be on the same.
We're not all on the same page.
Select Board discussion of it, yes.
Okay.
It's been presented to the committee that was working on it.
Okay.
Which is a subset.
Yeah. Yeah, that was back in November that they published this. Well, going through, reading the information, there's so much more rev, tax revenue that this town can generate by this coming in that every resident would be able to benefit from. So that, that's my, my thoughts on that.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that thought.
Thank you.
Yep. Very good. All right. So just a couple of things. We got through January 1st, so I just wanted to shout out all the folks that were involved in that. It was a great event to have our gathering over at the Congregational Church.
Didn't break the bell.
The bell did ring 250 times. We did not break the bell. Or the, the spirits of the people that rang the bell. And had a great luncheon thereafter. So of all those that made homemade soups and breads and did all sorts of setting up, picking up, cleaning up, much, much appreciated. And I think we had over, at one point, I counted about 120 people on the lawn. And it was easily that. And it was filmed by East Hampton Media. They haven't finished putting it up on our website yet, but as soon as we do, we'll, we'll get it tied into, into our website. But yeah, it was a great event. And then the hike that had been planned for that day, for Up the Mountain, had been postponed, but Cindy led a small group to Wolf Hill that day. And then on Saturday, another day, very similar to today in terms of the wind, at least, she took about 27 brave souls up the mountain. So they had a great hike, I guess, on Saturday. And the only casualty of Saturday, to my knowledge, is the Mother's Club sign at the corner of Pomeroy Meadow Road and Route 10. The wind took it and kind of twisted it, broke the, no.
Not the hikers.
No, 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 not the hikers. Hikers are fine. Hikers are fine. So the, the wind came and really just, the wood was probably on its last leg anyway. It looked pretty sturdy, but the wind really did a number on it. And so the sign was kind of swaying in the wind, so it was taken down for safety. We'll get that one replaced. But that's been our, our go-to sign to kind of look at things as to what's happening in town. So if you drive by and realize that it's missing, that's why. The wind kind of claimed it for us. So, anyway, we have some more events starting up. And we've got a couple of things that we will be doing very soon. And we want you to follow the events on the town website. And then there is a separate Southampton 250th Anniversary Facebook page, for those that are on Facebook. And we're working on getting an Instagram account as well.
I just think now's the right time to mention more about the hikes. Thank you for bringing that up. This is turning out to be something that people really like to do. We are entering from West Hampton, so it isn't climbing 1,000 feet. It's only climbing about 300 or 400 feet. And it's very popular. And I've been getting requests to be a part of these hikes. We've got two more planned. One's this Friday, and one is a week from Saturday. And you can email me directly, cpalmer@townofsouthampton.org. People who've lived here for 30 or 40 years have said, "I always wanted to climb up there." And I'm going to add the thing about the weather, Chris. It was very cold when we went this recent Saturday, but nobody was cold when we got to the top because we chugged up, you know? So we're, we're taking safety precautions about things. But if people are interested, we are limiting the number because it's private property that we access through, and parking is minimal. So we meet here at Town Hall. If anyone's interested, email me, and I will let you know. And there'll be more. It's a perfect time to see from the top of the mountain because there's no leaves on the trees right now. So, thanks.
Very good. And then if you haven't heard, the beard contest is about to start. We have our Highway Department Chief and our Police Chief running that. And the, there are four different categories. So from clean-shaven to existing beard to fastest-growing beard, et cetera, et cetera. And the fastest-growing beard contest actually starts on the 15th. And those, you need to register for with Ian, our Police Chief. And I think you do have to get your mugshot taken to see what you look like before it starts. So please check the website for details. And we really just hope to have some great participation and fun with that. And we'll have some other events as we go along. We do try to kind of keep an evolving planning process going, and we're gaining steam here. But anyway, thanks, everybody, for joining in. And we really hope that you'll find a time to at least join in on some of the events during the year. Okay, so tonight, we don't have a very big agenda. We don't have any appointments or resignations at this point. So we'll jump over to Scott and the Town Administrator Report.
Yeah, so tonight's going to be a little bit light, but I can guarantee you the next meeting will have a lot more.
You warned me, yes, I know.
So the compensation plan, I'm going to be completing, talking to all the different departments, but I'll have a final version for the Select Board and where everyone places in it for adoption or changing for the next meeting. I got an email today from the union, so they're okay with the draft MOA/contract. So I'm going to send that out tomorrow.
This is the Highway Union?
Highway Union. So the MOA is going to look a little bit different, so it's not line by line because we, we didn't have a full contract for the last couple of cycles, just a list of MOAs over the last couple of years. So we took everything and updated the entire contract. So the MOA will be the red-line contract. And then, once everyone approves it, then we'll reformat it and then have everyone sign it. So I'll send that out tomorrow to the Select Board to start reviewing. There's quite a bit of changes in it. And then the cannabis host agreement, hopefully, we're going to have it for that next meeting as well, or at least in early February. But we want to get at least the draft completed for the Select Board to review. Just a notice that our ATA is going to be away for a short period of time. Was an unplanned opportunity. He's actually skiing with Lindsey Vonn right now. Yeah, as a.
That, too.
Who's an ATA?
Get him out.
Assistant town accountant.
Assistant town accountant. Assistant town accountant, yeah.
So he, yeah, he had a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It's essentially going to be his last time skiing. He's an avid skier and came out of nowhere, so, with the World Cup of Skiing. So he sent pictures, and it's quite impressive. But he will be back probably next month. We're in contact with him. He has the computer as well, so you can do remote work and things like that if needed. The revenues, we, we missed the Friday date of getting November done, but Bradley was able to get it on Monday. He was sick, unfortunately, Thursday and Friday. So we are, we are on schedule. We've completed up to November. And then we just have to obviously finish December in the next week or two, and we'll be completely caught up with revenues.
So we'll have those for the next meeting as well? New report? Yeah, perfect.
Through December, through November.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah.
Yep. December, I have to just double-check with Bradley and Jen.
Yeah, sure.
But, and then all the tax bills came out, and there's a new format. It's one of those things where we unfortunately can't edit the format of it. I know that the old format was better. So the next year, we're going to try to work with Vadar, but it's something that's kind of set in stone by the Vadar software, so.
So one thing I would just say on that is, because I saw a lot of input on social media about tax bill. I thought tax bill was very easy and simple to read. But what I liked even better is previously, through Unipay, I had set up for automatic notifications. And this is the first time I got a text three days before the bill showed up at the House with a link to go on, pay the bill, and be done with it. So I thought that was well-done, whoever triggered turning that switch on.
Very good.
Nice.
Good.
So if anyone does have any questions or comments or concerns, feel free to contact me on the website, and I can coordinate with either the assessors or the treasurer in getting information that you'd like, or. It's never a fun time of year.
Exactly. I know. Yeah.
So.
All right. Perfect. That's it? All right. Good. Any questions for Scott? Anything?
The formatting of your report is a little different than the agenda for the meeting. And you struck through some topics. And I think that's fine. They're not addressing your current memo. But in particular, land planning is such an important investment in the town. It really should be, and I'm sure it is carried on the agenda for the Select Board each and every time in case we need to talk about it or take any action.
I think these mean, that these were things that we were supposed to do that we've actually done. So getting the land use planner, that's what that one is. It's not the planning exercise itself.
I could interpret that, yes.
I mean, that's, that's what that is. And I think one we didn't announce, and if you want to, the Pure Foods.
Hasn't officially been done by the governor yet, but I assume the governor clearly is going to sign it.
Okay. So it looks like that legislation has come through to help them with their alcohol license, yeah? So that's great. Okay. Select Board reports. Cindy, you got anything down there? We'll start with that.
The Board of Health meets next, has not met since our last meeting, and I think it, I wrote it down here somewhere. Forgot where. It's going to be meeting coming up, so I don't have a report from the Board of Health. The Board of Assessors met today, and yes, tax bills went out. And we got a few phone calls, I know. We're also looking at exemptions, et cetera, in the, in the usual fashion. And it's a busy time of year for the Board of Assessors and for the Assessor's Office. So that's my report there. And finally, the Open Space Committee. We've, as I reported last time, these are, these are ongoing processes, but we've had a couple of property owners reach out and want to talk about the methodology of conserving their property. And I know one of them specifically might want to have a Zoom meeting with me, the Chair, at some point, and then move forward on that. So it's, it's an ongoing situation, and we're still looking at the Open Space and Recreation Plan to make sure we're doing things consistent with that set of objectives and goals.
Okay. Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, the Conservation Commission meeting was canceled due to the lack of a chair. The Technology Committee, there's nothing to report from that. And the Housing Authority, important thing out of their last meeting was they had approval for the parcel at 318 College Highway from the Conservation Commission, so they can move forward with that.
Okay. So is CONCOM going to be meeting again to try and find a chair? Or do you, do you not have full membership now?
They have another member. Like, we had another person join. There is nobody who stepped up as the chair, so that, I think you're causing a little bit of confusion around who's running the meetings. And not having someone running the meetings means the last meeting was.
Was there a vice chair?
There is no vice chair.
It would fall to the senior member.
Yeah.
The senior member, so whoever's been on the committee the longest in the absence of a chair or vice chair shall assume the duties of chair until such time as somebody comes forward.
I mean, you'd have to have a meeting to get people to put out a slate of nominees and then vote upon it, so.
I mean, we can see who the small senior member is, and I'm just not sure they're willing to take on that responsibility.
Well, it'd be a short-term thing. I mean, just to get it, get a first meeting up so that you could hopefully elect a, a chair. I mean, certainly.
No one on the committee was willing to take that responsibility last meeting, so.
All right.
Seems to be.
Need to talk about that a little more? Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that might warrant an offline conversation because there's.
Yeah, that's an important commission, and I think there'll be many people in town that, you know, look to the commission for action on things, and so.
Statutory obligation.
Exactly. I mean, and not, not one that we can.
We want to serve.
Just lapse.
Citizens, no question.
Okay. Yep. Stephen, committees?
Dan mentioned the Housing Authority. It is scheduled to meet on the 15th next week, one hour prior to the Planning Board meeting on the 15th. I hope to attend both. There are important issues before each. Yeah, I think there's also a meeting of the Community Preservation Committee scheduled. Wait a minute, I'm not the one on that. I'm on the Greenway Committee, which is not scheduled. So there you have it.
All right.
Not much to say.
Okay.
All of this.
Well, getting, getting going at the beginning of the year again, it takes a while to gear back up again. But yeah. John?
School Committee's tomorrow night. PPP is the week after. The last PPP, we moved to finalize and cause a public hearing to happen regarding the work-from-home ability change to the bylaws. So that's out there. That public hearing will be next Thursday, and assuming, I'm assuming that we'll hear anything, anybody in the audience, and then we will close the public hearing and vote it one way or the other and send it to the Select Board for ratification. And we're continuing to work through the budget on the school sides. And we, because I wasn't at our last meeting here, so I don't know if Scott updated, but Scott and I both attended the All District Committee for the introduction on the budget, scenario and information. So that's moving along fine. And I think that my big takeaway from that was, there's probably going to be, there is going to be a one-time cash positive impact to the town because of money that should have been charged to grants that was charged to the general fund for us on the school side, going back three or four years. And sort of all get cleaned up. I, I ran the numbers pretty quick, and I had two commas in the number I came up with for us. So hopefully that gets resolved. They're on track to get that resolved before we close out this year. So it would be in next year's free cash.
Okay, all right. And so for PQB mentioned a hearing on next Thursday, not this Thursday, next Thursday?
Thursday, at our regular meeting. Well, we're going to start with the public hearing and then go into our regular meeting after that.
All right. And is there, so there's nothing for anybody to review right now? You can open it up, that meeting, or?
No, it's posted. It's in the three common areas.
Okay. We ought to get it on our website, Scott, on the front page, if we don't have it on the website? Yeah? So we can have that. I mean, that's the, you know, just to keep in mind, people, that, you know, if there's latest news that is really of concern to the real broader community, community, you know, from your individual departments or committees, commissions, be sure to let Scott know, so we can tag those on the latest news at the bottom. It comes out on the bottom part of the, the town homepage on our website. That way, once it's there, it sometimes gets picked up through, through our Facebook page, et cetera, et cetera. So we can get the word out a little bit broader than that. I was not aware of it at all, so.
Okay.
Thank you. What the topic is here is sharing information with the public when there's reason to cause a public hearing. And I recognize public hearings have their own rules. But like you, I would advocate for maximum transparency and providing the, if you will, applicant information online to the public in advance of the hearing. We'll circle back when we talk about approval of minutes. But I just wanted to expand on my prior comments and clarify that with the adoption of the new permitting software, my amendment to the motion was that, if not this software, some parallel investment provides that opportunity for the public to see the applicant's information in advance of the public hearing. Most other communities have it. We conspicuously do not.
And it used, because I would make the argument, or I have made the argument before, that our packets should be made available. Whatever the deadline for the posting is, they, they should be out there and available, although redacted, which it seems like most of this stuff's redacted already that's coming to us. We're not getting a lot of the classified information, which is fine. But the argument was always, under the old website, we never had the bandwidth or the storage capacity to do it. But we've resolved that issue now.
Well, we do. But then you've got people to be responsible for posting that. And right now, I mean, Scott and I are keeping up with certain things, but every page is up to everybody's department or committee or commission. Okay? But the overall, a couple of things Scott and I are working on, on an overall basis. But it's, you know, we need to be sure we're catching up, too. So it's not to keep on posting more stuff. I don't know. We, we need to talk about that and where we would do that.
Does our elected clerk have a responsibility to echo what the committees are doing as a modern-day town crier?
The, the clerk from.
Town clerk.
Our elected town clerk have a responsibility to ensure that these various public events are adequately noticed.
Well, I mean, I think for any, I'm not talking about minutes or the packets, John, right now. But back to Stephen's point for a second. I think my understanding is for any kind of public hearing, we have to announce that. In most cases, it's got to be put in the newspaper. Am I not right on that?
I think it depends which public hearing it's for.
Okay. But I know for a while, and it may have sloughed off a little bit now just because of the changes within CONCOM, but I know there used to be, you know, when there was an NOI, or I forget which one has to be posted. The NOI or the RDAs had to be put out there on, you know, publicized in terms of.
Yeah, they'll still go in the paper.
And then those were more visible. That paperwork was always visible in Lucy's office for people to come and see it before the meeting.
So you can make a physical trip in.
That's, that's how that was under previous administrations, but we can, it's something we need to work on.
I'm not sure that's the case with the Planning Board.
Probably, I don't know. But there's.
Or other boards that may have public hearings.
Right, okay. Something we can put on our agenda of how to deal with public hearings and make that more.
My experience with the Planning Board is that there was a posting in the newspaper when it was.
Yes, the newspaper is required by law, and I'm not saying that anything we've done is not compliant with law. It's just not compliant with transparency.
Talking about the full package of information, so. I think that's a, yeah, we'll, we'll have to take that up as a separate topic. We'll, we'll take a note on that and figure out how we can deal with that.
Thank you.
But that's fine. Just on my part, very briefly, we have a bylaws committee, bylaws advisory committee review meeting tomorrow. We're working on a couple of bylaws. The use of public buildings, which is basically right now Town Hall because the library and the school already have their own policies. And then there's an update on the swimming pool policy. And then we're working on creating the scenic roads policy. So we'll be working on those and get at least a couple of them ready for a special town meeting, I'm hoping. And then on Monday, we have both a grant committee meeting by Zoom. We'll be working on some mass trails projects and maybe anything else that's come up. And then also in the evening at 6 o'clock, we're having another 250th Anniversary Group Meeting upstairs on Monday, the 13th, at 6:00 PM. So anybody else who would like to join in, please do. Every time, we've had a little bit of a, a different cadre of characters that show up, but it's been great. We've had a good 20 people or so that come up to our meetings, which has been very good. So much appreciate everybody's input and lots of creative ideas out there. We just have to figure out what we can manage, so.
Take a question?
Sure, go ahead.
About the Grants Committee. I know that things like the Mass Trails Grant are an annual success story for the town. There's some other categories. And then there's some where we're perhaps reaching for the stars.
For the one-stop?
And it's one-off. But is there 12-month calendar of grant opportunities? I'd be very interested in joining the committee to look at that future planning of opportunities.
Sure. Okay. We can make that happen, yep. Yes, these are, these are ones that are going to be due within the next couple of months, the two or three that I have in mind. And there will be the expression of interest for the one-stop program as well, not the actual application, but just the expression of interest on that. So, very good. All right. Let's move on to new business. We have the FERCOG Highway Program 2026. This is the Franklin Regional Council of Governments program. And Scott, you want to tell us what's going on here?
This is just a request from Randall, our Highway Superintendent, to be able to sign on behalf of the town into the shared services and procurement agreement. So if he needs to buy some, I'm not sure exactly, salt or whatever, he would be able to sign for the, for the town on behalf and procure that.
We've had this relationship in prior years, I believe.
Yeah.
And this is distinct from the Elder Van.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, totally different.
Because it's the same organization?
Well.
I want to be clear.
Well, yeah, this, no, this is Franklin Regional.
Council of Governments.
Council of Government. You're thinking Franklin Regional Transportation at the moment.
You're correct. Franklin.
Franklin Regional part is correct, yeah.
This allows them to use their procurement services at a discount. And I think we pay $500 a year for the membership.
And we have.
Yeah. I make a motion to authorize the Highway Superintendent to sign on behalf of the town for any procurement that is budgeted for under the FRCOG Highway Program fiscal year 26.
Okay.
All right. Just as a note, it looks like it needs to be the Select Board or the quote-unquote mayor of the town to sign. So if it, if it needs to be me, that's fine, but let me know.
Okay.
And just clarity on, on the membership fee, though. Do you mention $500? I don't think so. It's like a bit more than that.
Say it again?
The membership to be part of this?[1787.84]
Cost. I don't know what it is, but I know it's a line item in his budget.
Yeah, but I think it looks like here, it's 30.
$3,200.
$3,200, yeah. Yeah. $3,255, but that does get a great discount in terms of all the materials he needs for winter roads, et cetera. So, okay, so we have a motion and a second, although, do we have a second?
Yes.
We did. Who seconded it?
Stephen.
Stephen? All right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Hearing, no opposition. That is approved. Thank you. All right. Very good. Well, 250th anniversary is on the agenda. I kind of talked about it already. I don't know that I have anything else to report, just to say that we are a work in progress, and we will just keep on getting the word out as best we can. We have these couple of events right now for January, but we have two or three things in mind for February, and we're trying to take a look at everything a couple of months at a time and try to work out whatever we can pull together. And we have a small merchandising committee that is set up that is also looking at what we might do for things like t-shirts or promotional materials, t-shirts, mugs, whatever it might be. So they're going to be meeting as well and talking about ideas for that and things that we can hopefully put our new logo on. And the logo, as you have seen, is very colorful. It looks great. Becky Nimmens, thank you very much for designing that for us. And that will go on a lot of our paper stuff and our website and our Facebook things very, very easily. Might be more of a challenge in terms of cost to actually put that in color like that on a t-shirt, for example. So that may end up being like a two-color thing rather than the multicolor that it is now, but we'll work on that with her to understand what makes sense and what doesn't make sense. And we are looking at getting a big banner to put out on the front lawn to sort of say, "Congratulations, Southampton, for your 250th." And Scott, you were looking into the big birthday cake, wherever it ended up.
We've had a lot of leads, but no reported sightings yet.
Okay. So there was this giant birthday cake that I know Westfield had had, and it's made, I don't know if it's made out of plywood. It's huge.
No guarantee.
It's huge. And that, we heard that there was one anyway that had made the rounds to Leverett, Leverett, I think, and we've checked in with them, but there's this sort of floating, not floating, it's too heavy, but a movable birthday cake to go to the various towns that are celebrating either their 250th or their 350th. So if we should find our source on where that might be, we might.
Or a baker.
Yeah, well, we can do little ones, but this is pretty large. So we'll see. We may have that, too, but we got lots of things that we're thinking about, so. Okay. We have some minutes to take a look at on December.
Well, should we approve the minutes on December 10th, 2024?
Okay. Is there any second on that?
Second.
Yep. Second by Dan. And Stephen, did you have a clarification for the minutes, or was that?
Well, I gave ample time in response to your good suggestion that when there's a public hearing, that the applicant's materials be provided to the public via our website.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And so that's what I was meaning. There are fewer words in minutes, which are not wrong, but they're less clear than what I.
Okay. So we'll just take your oral expansion, or would you like that reflected in the minutes?
Well, I trust that our town administrator has good memory and really shares the same goals.
Okay. Very good. All right. So if there's no other questions, could we have an approval of the minutes, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Minutes are approved for December 10th, and thanks to Kathy Ingram for keeping us up to date. I think we've done a much better job this year at having minutes more regularly, more up to date, and we really appreciate all of that. One PS, just while Stephen's got me on the website idea, just to note that there are things, anytime we've got reports, so like the sewer study that Tammy mentioned, when we've got like the contract for the land use planner, various things like that, those will be going up on the website. So we're trying to put up those kinds of things very, very regularly. Our budget information, obviously, will be up there. I mean, there'll be a variety of things that are there, so we're trying to do our best. I had not gotten to the idea of packets, but we definitely have things, all of the town reports that are there for the last 10 years. These town meeting and special town meeting warrants are there. The minutes of those special town meetings and annual town meetings are there. So we, you know, we've got more and more stuff that we're trying to keep up with, so hopefully people are using it and learning from it, I'm hoping.
Madam Chair, as one of the chief architects of the website redesign, I want to thank you for making it such a comprehensive resource. It is still thick to wade through and find a particular item of interest. It may be under plans and reports, if it's deemed to be of town-wide interest, or it may be in another pocket under the board and committee that generated that plan. I don't have any suggestions except to say, there's more there than meets the eye. You provided a lot of good information, and we've heard from the users that it's still a little tough to find it.
Okay.
Including even staff members.
Okay. Well, and the easiest thing to do right now probably is to put in the search engine on the homepage, just type in a couple of words of search of what you're looking for, zoning bylaws, whatever.
It's there.
And it will pop up. It will go to it. I promise you, that part is working.
Yes.
What we're trying to do is eliminate duplications, so like the documents and forms page right now, some of those are very outdated and do not match the newest form that is on the department head's home page. And so we're trying to cross-check that and wipe out all the old stuff, and that page may actually modify quite a bit, because we don't want to, what was happening before is we'd post it in different places, and so whenever there was a change, the change never kept up because it was individual posting. Now we're trying to link everything, so if there's a change, it links on whatever other page it may be on, okay? So we're trying to get there. So bear with us, but by all means, reach out if there's something you notice that's pretty wonky. We're trying to get there. All right. Anything, no personnel change forms right now? Any, just some updates, Scott, on old business? I don't know if there's anything on the listing there. Stormwater Enterprise Fund, we still have to get back on schedule to start working on. We have not begun that, right?
Yeah, still in Tyon Bond's court.
Still with them?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And we have not developed what Tammy was alluding to, the broadband committee charge yet, so that would be something to at least bring up. I think my assumption there would be that we would probably have a committee look at it. I mean, I don't think we can not look at it, because we have gone through the MLP votes twice at town meeting, and when we did our priorities for town probably three years ago now, that came up as really a high priority. So I think we will still at least go through the committee review and what studies might need to be looked at there. Menhan Meadows Bridge update. Scott, will be working on a new grant application?
Yeah. And the good news is we have all the estimates in, we have all the plans in. I still have to forward you the stamp plans.
Okay.
Remember that. So I think the grant will be for the full amount this year.
Okay. Yeah, what we had, what we ran into there, that project had already been extended once, and so mass trails, because they get their monies through the federal government, they have a time limit in terms of how long they can extend it for. So unfortunately, that's run up, and that, a whole year was wasted, if you will, in terms of getting the river permit, and that really took up a lot of time out of anybody's control, really. So we will be working on putting in a new grant application with that. So if you do have a CONCOM meeting, I will reach out to Diana, who worked a large part on the grant, Diana Federman, and we will pick up the information that she had from that and start from there. Capital asset planning, we will need to get going on whatever we're doing for a capital committee, so we can put together our capital improvement request for this year. Green energy, are we done with all of our installation?
I've had a few meetings with Lisa, but that hasn't come up yet, so I'm fairly, I just want to make sure everything was completed from the 23rd.
That was the last one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And probably nothing on the East Street Greenway project yet?
Not yet.
Okay, all right. Have we heard anything about the Safe Roots to Schools one to Norris?
I did get an email yesterday from Tyon Bond. I didn't have a chance to go through it yet, though, but.
Because they should be working somewhere. The state should be working on that design work for the sidewalk from Route 10, Pomeroy-Meadow Road connection up to Gun Road extension?
They're going to be, the subsurface utility exploration is going to be on Pomeroy-Meadow Road for about two days, just to do a, to find all the subsurface utilities, so.
Okay. So they're looking at utilities under the road, then? Okay.
And they're advancing to the pre-25% plan.
Okay. All right.
And who's actually got the drawings of that once they do all their field work?
DOT is running the whole thing, but Randall's been the connection to them.
Right, and we're contracting out with Tyon Bond.
Tyon Bond.
This is what I want to get at, because Tyon Bond is separately, but importantly, working on the same right-of-way for the sewer feasibility or 25% design when we go to that. And just as with the trunk line in the rail bed in the Greenway, we should be cognizant of the disruption to Pomeroy-Meadow and the opportunity to leverage the two projects to collaborate as one.
Good point. And it's not here, but I know you're going to ask if you haven't already, I know you've got a meeting coming up with the land use planning, a pre-meeting coming up?